I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Amen.
We'll call a meeting in order, and we've had someone, a guest here this morning, is not on the agenda, but there's a program going on between all three of the school corporations and business and industry, and Lori here is the one that is heading this up, and I'd like to ask her to explain this to you, because I think that's something that's going to be important to all of us in economic group.
All right, thank you. I don't want to take much of your time, just a couple of minutes. Like Bill said, we have an opportunity from the Lilly Endowment for a grant opportunity to deal with an area of counseling, and all three Whitley County schools are going together and working on an initiative geared towards the college and career counseling aspect of it, helping kids figure out what occupations are out there, what jobs are out there, what career paths they can follow, and what they need to do to get there, whether that be through high school electives, through mentorships, internships, ICE opportunities, things like that. So I just wanted to ask each one of you. We're starting with a community planning session. We would love to have input from all of you. It's going to be on Wednesday, March 22nd. There you go. Ego Glenn, you're invited to join us for breakfast, and then we're going to have a brainstorming session of how this looks in Whitley County, what businesses, government leaders, and community leaders in Whitley County are interested in supporting, willing to support, and how the schools can work together with the community to help students get their pathways figured out and help them get on the road to what they hope to do for the first two to five years at a high school, to really help them get that under control so they know where they're going, and so they're using their time in high school wisely, elective-wise and work experience-wise, to help get them there. So this is our first planning session, and we'd love to have your input.
I got one question.
I don't see Whitco listed on here.
Thank you. Initially, Whitco was going in a different direction with their counseling grant. We all received planning grants at the beginning, at the end of January, beginning of February. Since that time, Whitco has decided to come on board, so it does represent all three, but unfortunately, we already had these printed. So it is representing all three at this point.
I think this is really a good idea. My question, first thing that popped in my mind is, we have counselors in these schools.
Absolutely.
Aren't they not involved in doing this already?
They are. They are. It's kind of a bigger job than they can tackle on their own, because we know budget cuts have occurred in the schools and counseling has taken a hit, and so we're working to see how we can supplement that. The counselors are definitely still involved and will continue to be involved, but it's a matter of how community and businesses can help support that, so students get that real work experience. The counselors will definitely still be involved in the guidance part of it. It's kind of getting them out in the workforce, seeing the jobs firsthand, maybe job shadowing or seeing what's out there, having guest speakers come in and speak to the classes that can give a real-world perspective that we just can't give internally. Any other questions? All right. If you can let us know if you plan to join us, so we know how many to plan for for breakfast. All of my contact information is on the corner, but we'd really appreciate your support in this. Thank you.
Thank you. First thing on the agenda is DJ Sigler. Was he going to come, George, did you know?
I hadn't heard anything from him.
Going from part-time to full-time prosecutor. We have to prove something.
We've already got full-time, I mean, we have Matt, so we're not changing any status.
No, we're just changing it.
Is that a yearly thing, or is it a new elected thing?
Well, he's been, we used to just have part-time prosecutor with white leather.
Right.
And then Matt chose to be full-time, and I assume, according to state statutes, I assume that they have to have the county's blessing to make that a full-time position, being he's new. I would guess that that's the reason.
Is it something they had to come to us, though, on a yearly basis, just because he's a new prosecutor?
No, no. We did that before with Matt. I mean, when he went full-time, and we did it once, and that was it. I mean, it'll last as long as he's in office, same way with the deputy.
You said he's coming, so we may hold off on that a little bit, he is going to show up.
Okay, that'd be good.
Yeah. Sure, yeah, and then he can go back to protecting us.
What I'm coming to ask for today is, on December 31st, 2016, we had a squad car totaled. It's been the longest process we've had with travelers to get the settlement out of them. After the damaged car and equipment, the final total paid to the county back was $19,874.56. It's approximately going to cost somewhere between $78,000 and about $8,500 to finish the purchase of the car and the installation of the new equipment and some of the equipment that was damaged. So what I'm requesting from the council is, of course, the $19,874 back from the wrecked car and additional $4,902.44, and then I will pick up the approximately between $2,900 and $3,500 to buy the other equipment and install it.
How did that accident occur?
I think the cause that the state, when they came and worked it, was unfamiliar with the territory, and we couldn't do crush factor, I believe, possibly speed. It was the same hill where Adam Schrader had crashed.
Driving too fast?
Can't prove it. I can give you an opinion, but I prefer not to.
Who was it?
It was one of our reserves.
Around Airport Road where that hill, roller coaster road comes into the airport?
No, it was out 350, Larranha, 350 north.
You've heard me before, I think they drive too fast. I mean, I watch them on 205, and one bumper to bumper going down there, and there's Amish, and there's tractors, and there's slow-moving traffic out there that I just hope it never happens, but it just looks to me, and I remember one incident last summer, it wasn't 10 minutes, and an Amish lady with kids went by, 10 minutes later, here comes a car down, and I thought, had she been 10 minutes slower, when they come up over them hills, I don't know how they'd ever get stopped, and there's no burn on 205 for most of the way between here and Columbus City, and I still think they drive too fast. I mean, you know, I understand, you know, you don't really know what you got on the scene, do you get there, but I think many times, things are under control, that they can get there, you know, just a little bit slower and probably still be effective.
What year was the car?
It was a 2015.
But wasn't enough to total it?
It was totaled.
Oh, it was totaled?
It is totaled, yeah.
Do we get the check back to the general fund?
The new price of a car is $24,777, and they gave us $14,864.
Insurance and what you're going to pay out of the commissary, you need another $4,700?
I need $4,902.44, is what I'm requesting.
You've just been using the backup car in the interim?
We have. We just ran into an issue with the spare last week. The transmission has went out of it. It's a 2012 with, I believe, around $80,000. I'm going to fix the transmission, because we need that.
So at this point, you don't have one on order or anything?
No, we have not ordered without your guys' approval for what money.
Where'd that come from, Jan?
Yeah, I think you've kept.
The commissioners did provide a favorable pass for this.
Mark, if you're not sure exactly between that $2,900 and $3,500, are you sure $4,902.44 is all you need from us?
$4,902.44 is all I need, I'm requesting from the council, that will purchase the car, that way I can get it ordered, and the variable or the difference, I'll make up probably out of commissary.
Is your variable your equipment that you're not sure exactly on?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Motion to second. To approve the request, but a further discussion. Paul Frazier?
Favor of Frazier, right here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm here to ask for a part-time position to be added to the treasurer's office. We already have four part-time employees, but they're really just seasonal. They only work the month before, May 10th and November 10th, and they only work part-time. And their average age, well, their ages are from 68 to 77, those four part-time people. What I'm asking for is someone that can work year-round, one to two days a week. My coworker received five weeks of vacation this year, plus she has a week carryover, so that's six weeks of vacation that she's going to need to get in this year. We're just a two-man office. Coverage will be difficult at best. Then there's the fact that the State Board of Accounts requires internal controls, which is hard to achieve with just one person in the office for over a six-to-10-week period. I had $3,787 left in my part-time budget at the end of 2016, which I would assume that will be the same as 2017. Plus, I have an additional $1,100, which should give me around $4,900 extra dollars for 2017 that I could put somebody on one to two days a week. My goal here also is to preserve the integrity of the office with advanced training, because in three years, nine months, and three weeks, Lynda and I will probably be gone, and I think start training somebody now would be an excellent idea.
So at this point, you aren't asking for any additional part-time funding?
Nope. I'm just asking your blessing on bringing somebody in.
Would this, then, during your peak times, enable you to cut back on those hours having that person?
I would, yes, definitely. Because Lynda and I, neither one ever take any vacation or, you know, schedule any doctor appointments or anything during those peak times, so.
And then I thought there was something shared someplace, too, that this would give you complete daily coverage as far as lunch breaks and stuff, or did I?
Well, no.
No?
You know, still, with Lynda taking six weeks vacation, one to two days a week, there's still going to be times that I'm there, I'm there alone all day.
I like to do a job classification on a part-time person.
It's just going to help relieve the problem.
Well, you might think back on this. I asked Jim, I thought at one time we hired a part-time person to do that, floating around to cover for lunches and stuff like that, and somehow it's, that person is, you have become full-time, or?
Not in my office. My office is, you know, when I came in...
We had one.
Well, I've been here four years, so maybe it was prior to that.
Is there still one now, or they're just not floating to her office?
I don't know either that or it comes, she got full-time, and we never filled it.
It'd be an excellent idea, because, you know, there are a lot of offices upstairs that are just, you know, skeleton crew.
Just need somebody that wants to know why.
Well, and I think with our new paid time off.
Yeah, that really, that's what really put the...
That's going to, especially at the end of the year, it's going to press a lot of the government offices to a skeleton crew in December, so.
Yeah.
One thing in your office, back when Lisa was treasurer, and she was in here one day, and I don't know if it was at a budget time or what time of the year it was, but anyway, Kim, just ask her, do you need that? Do you need what, three people, yourself and two more up there? Lisa said no, and I don't know whether someone had retired or whatever, but we never replaced one, so we've been without, that was staff, you know, heavy at one time, and so, you know, you haven't had that big a staff, and Lisa just said, no, I don't need that other one, and so we got rid of one there years ago, and just relied on part-time.
Work-wise, Lynda and I can, you know, we've been handling it the last four years, and, you know, we can do it, but now that the vacation, you, they have more vacation now, Lynda has more vacation.
I think this is a reasonable request, because it's pretty obvious she's not abusing the part-time fund at all, and so I guess I'd make a motion that we approve that.
Well, I think she's made quite clear to us that they're both leaving in the next three, three-and-a-half years, too, so I would, I think she's being very proactive in getting someone in there to get them trained and know what's going on.
I'd say discriminant age.
Discrimination?
Age discrimination. Yeah, against the elderly, but I think, you know, if you find somebody younger, it'd probably be pretty good.
Well, that's, that's the whole idea. In four years, you know, the younger one that's 68, she's going to be 72, and a four-year commitment would be till she's 76. I just see that that's unreasonable.
We have a motion from Jim to approve the request.
I'll second the motion, as is.
All favor of Frazier, right here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We also have, not on your agenda, but a statement to the...
Alcohol beverage?
Yeah.
Yeah. I make a motion, we just continue on that 10th tab, carry on.
I'll second it.
Secondly, approve the appointment of Kevin Lind to the O.R. Kelly alcohol beverages, or however you say it. All favor of Frazier, right here. I would just say.
There's only four spots, but I have, like, the first four you sign it.
You have four, I see.
And then you need to sign it. So just four of you right here, like you're here and Jake here.
Yeah, I'm getting ready for the next spot.
We need to sign it, so.
Whoever that might be.
Hopefully, going out.
Yeah, really.
This is, not Jan to explain it, but it's, we have to do with an overpayment and do the, went to the general fund, it should have gone to...
SDI.
SDI. And I'll let Jan tell you what that is. George, would you like to give a couple things here that you want to give us an explanation for?
Sure. Our last meeting, we had a real short meeting. We've been fortunate, we haven't had a lot on the docket here. We did deal with policy manual in our equal employment opportunity policy, we had to change that. We had to add sexual orientation and gender identification to our equal employment opportunity 1.5 policy. So to keep current and legal, we had to do that. Then we had also another policy change for paid time off. We had to amend our paid time off policy to change to hours prorated upon hire instead of introductory period. It was, introductory period was between six months and 30 days, and so everybody was using a little bit different introductory period, so we just went to upon hire, and that's what we intended originally when we dealt with the paid time off, anyway, so that was changed. I've got both of those here, if you'd like to see that. We talked to Tom Payne, who is from IGS Energy, that's the hedge, the gas, NIPSCO hedge fund that we use to save money with our gas prices, our natural gas. We had a meeting with Mr. Payne, his, I've got a presentation here. It looks like in the last five months, we've saved just around $7,400, $7,467 by using the hedge fund, and what they do is they pool their resources and get better prices at the wellhead, and that's how they get their savings.
How good, how long is the price as good for? I mean, do they fluctuate with the price of natural gas, or do they stay current for the year?
It stays current, and that's what this hedge fund is. We hedge at a certain amount. If it goes up or down, you know, if it goes down, then we actually lose money, but...
But it did come down substantially, like?
Yeah, luckily, we just, we just, last year, started this, we provided this contract, and so we're at the low end on the natural gas. Natural gas is not volatile at all anymore, it's with the fracking and everything else.
I've got calls just this winter already from them people, and I just tell them I'm not interested.
Yeah. We've used them, this is about our fifth, no, fourth year that we've been using them, and we've been looking at it, all three commissioners have been, have had our own thoughts on it, and we really, that's why we wanted Tom to come in and talk to us and look at it, and he did prove that we were having, we were getting savings on that.
A few years, something here in my wood. Sure. I hear a number of years ago, we were involved with something like that, and it turned out to be disastrous, if I recall right.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, maybe five years ago.
You remember, you guys remember any of that? The guy came in, made a presentation, and we tried to get out of it, because it was, I don't know, whatever.
Dan looked at our contract again, even though, you know, we've still got two more years on our contract, and to make sure that we weren't tied into anything, and he was fine with everything that they had in their contract, so we've just been trying to be prudent about looking at that contract the second year and making sure that we're, we are, do have some savings, so, because the end of the year next year, we'll be dealing with it again. Comp time, we have a report on comp time here. Our comp time is $559 comp time.
Oh, that's good.
That's been staying really steady, so our comp time policy is, I think, has been a great addition.
Yeah, we had to deal with that here a while.
Yeah, we were at $20,000 for a while there. I have a lot here. The only other thing I have, oh, you have in front of you, we just wanted to show what cost savings we've been able to provide. Commissioners have been working pretty close. Last year, we did a good job, I thought, with the cost savings, and this year, we can show, if you'll look, preferred IT contract, the sheriff now is working with another company through the Spillman contract that they have, so we've eliminated that $27,660 from our preferred IT contract, EMS payment, the foundation is going to pay $125,000 of EMS contract, plus we saved $13,766, $76 on insurance, so we don't have any of the liability insurance or accident insurance. So that was a savings of $138,000. Our medical insurance, by removing commissioners and councils, with our fixed cost savings, has been $91,000, and then the claims cost, and with the claims cost, that's variable, the savings could be more, could be less, but they looked at last year's claims and compared it to this year's claims, and they came up with an estimated savings of $100,000 on that. And then our workman's comp insurance, we changed to an IPEP, which again is a pooled program. A lot of the counties and a lot of the cities are going to this IPEP program, and the savings from last year to this year on our workers' comp insurance is $55,526, for a total of $413,685 for the year.
How do we, how did we come up with this 55? How do we save that?
On which one?
On the workman's compensation insurance.
We went to, we were through travelers before on our insurance, our workers' comp insurance, and there's a new type of insurance, it's a pooled insurance, that's the Indiana, and I can't, but it's IPEP is what it is, the name of it, and we checked a lot of different places, the city's using this now, a lot of the different counties are using this IPEP, because it's a lot cheaper than any of the other programs that we could find, and they work with us good with our safety program, they send safety people in and help us, so it's a real good program. Everybody's been happy that we know of, there haven't been any issues with anybody that we've talked to.
Just by pooling more people into it.
Yeah.
George, you had mentioned to be in conversation about making a payment on our loan at the bank.
Yes, we're down to $250,000 on our, out of the $635,000. And hopefully, with the savings that we're getting out of the insurance this year, I'm hoping that we can pipe that out this year.
That's a pretty good savings.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One thing, if you've got a little bit of time, I know DJ's got...
I was running, I'm a maturely issue.
I've just got, we had a Community Corrections Advisory Board meeting the other day, and there were some figures, the state came up, they had a lady from Recovery Works come up from the state, and it's a program that we use for, it's a program for grant monies that they use, but it's for the community corrections. Just a few numbers that they had, 57% of federal and 70% of state inmates use drugs regularly before going to prison. Seriously mentally ill people, 56% of the state are serious, of state prisoners are mentally ill, 45% of federal prisoners, and 64% of our jail population are, can be considered seriously mentally ill. General public is 4.1%.
Oh.
Addicted people, 74% of state prisons, 64% of federal prisons, and 76% of local jail inmates are addicted. General public is 8.4%, and that's a shock to me, that 8.4% of the general public is That's almost 1 in 10. So I thought it'd be interesting, you know, that's one reason we have some issues at the jail, because, you know, we're dealing with mentally, a lot of the mentally disabled people in our jail system, and if you'll look at, right now, we have, we have beds for 93 at community corrections, we've got about 76 in community corrections right now, we have 109 in the jail, but the people that we have in jail are not capable to be moved to the community corrections, and it's a huge issue, so I think we, as commissioners, have decided that we're going to look at, you know, we pay that $200,000 for the Bowen Center every year for mental health issues, and maybe we need to look at that $200,000, how we're using that, how they're using that, and, you know, something has to happen. We'll never reduce our jail population unless we deal with it, so.
Do Bowen Center, don't they go to the jail some now to deal with people?
Yeah, but we pay for that.
Don't they, that over and above?
We pay for that over and above.
They pay that beyond the contribution to the man.
Yeah.
They're not overly aggressive about health, either. That's my personal opinion, don't mean nothing factual, just, that's my opinion.
And the problem that we have, we've asked them to come in to make a report, but because of HIPAA rules, they can't really give us much information when they do come in.
Privacy rule?
Yeah, and so, we're, that's one thing that we're going to start looking into this year, because, you know...
because, you know, if we can deal with that, rather than looking at a 30, 40 million dollar jail, that's what we need to look at. Some of the people though that are at the jail that aren't eligible for work release though, they're not all mental health issues. Some of them are sent, depending on what their sentence is. If they're felonies, yeah, violent felonies, but.
And there are a few that don't even want to go.
And there's some that don't even want to go.
Yeah.
They'd rather stay in jail.
It just sounds logical to me though that a person's got to be mentally ill to do some of the stuff that causes you to get in jail in the first place. I mean, it's just not logical.
But then with the addiction, a lot of the addiction causes the mental illness too.
Sure, sure.
So there's a correlation there too. But I just thought that was interesting that what we have to deal with in our, in our jail system and the correction system, it's just.
Well, that's all over. Surely there's somebody coming up with some ways to deal with this because it's not just us.
But there's just a breakdown in our whole society. There is.
Yeah. Well, when they, when they closed the state institutions, they put them out on the, on the street. And those people ended up in jail. I, you know, they went from one institution to another.
Yeah, yeah.
But I agree with you, George. If we can figure out a way to put more resources towards the mental health issues there that would save us in the long run of maybe even the size of facility that we have to eventually build.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not going to get away with not having a jail.
No, no.
We certainly don't have to build one that for a capacity of 200 if we can get our population down to a, you know.
If we could release 20, or reduce 20 prisoners, we'd be way below what our maximum number is. It'd be easier to, to control. So that's kind of one of our, our thoughts this year is to, to deal with that. And, you know, it's only, you know, we're only one county, but, but somebody needs to start looking at that and dealing with it. Because we can't, we don't want to raise taxes on a 30 million, 40 million dollar jail. Just doesn't make sense. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm off my.
Is that it?
Pedestal here, so, thank you.
We have, Janice, would you tell them what this is? I know what it is.
Okay. For the additional appropriation for redevelopment, there wasn't a line item. When we, we paid off the SDI bond and there was surplus money. And they paid more than what was due for their bond. So we had to reimburse them that surplus money. So this is pretty much to pay the two, two times of the year. We wanted to appropriate it so we can track it. And this is that appropriation to keep track of that, those funds that we pay back to them because of their surplus from their bond. Does that make sense?
No. You have to break it down for me.
Okay, so the SDI bonds, they, there's a certain amount due, and I think February and August or something like that. And when they pay their taxes, we use their tax money and repay their bond payment. And this time there was a surplus. They paid more money in taxes than what was due for their bond. So there was that surplus. We had to pay that surplus back to them because that was in the original bond agreement.
So this $67,600 went into our general fund when it shouldn't have?
No, it went, it went into redevelopment.
Went into redevelopment?
Yes, and we need to pay it back to them because that would be, right.
Okay.
And we wanted to have a way of tracking it. So rather than paying it out of miscellaneous expense, it's now out of the, I forget what I, what it's called, but I think it's bond surplus is the account. So we can actually track it and see, you know, make sure we know.
Shouldn't have to start with.
Right, pretty much.
I'll second.
Second, Ted Lynn. Any further discussion? All favor, raise your right hand. Okay. I think we're ready for the.
Sorry for my. I had it on the calendar for the third minute this year, but it reminded me, when you're the new guy, you always show up early. The purpose of my visit to you all today is by statute, I'm required to notify this body of whether or not I've decided to elect to devote my full professional time to be also prosecutor and whether or not my chief deputy has done the same. And so I'm here today pursuant to statute to notify you all that I will be devoting my full professional time to be prosecutor of the county. In other words, statute permits prosecutors to be part-time and maintain private practice. I've opted not to do that for the last 15 years now, actually. But of course, free time I have as chief deputy and will be my chief deputy, have done the same thing. We believe that that is a cost savings to the county, prevents us from having to hire additional deputy prosecutors to spread the burden. So we will continue to be in office of three prosecutors, myself, Mr. Spring, and Mrs. Burris. So I come today to tell you that and to answer any questions you might have for me. And just as a personal side, listening to Mr. Trump's comments, I couldn't agree more to the extent that we can be helpful to you and to this body answering any questions we would do there. So thank you. Yes, sir.
This time because you were late, our clock was running.
No, I also, listen, I promised not to send you a bill for that. But I also heard you mention the county attorney, and I'd be real careful any advice you got there. That's just what I would say. So thank you.
You talking about the one we got now?
I'm talking about the one you got. The one you got is probably a trade-up, I'm going to tell you.
Well, yeah, anything can be trade-up from what we've got.
Well, I'll pass that on, sir. I'll pass that on. Probably over Christmas Day.
Is this just a formality? Do we have to approve this?
It's a notification.
Oh, it's a notification.
Counsel, I think what we're doing is, is acknowledging that he is doing that. It's not an approval, it's an acknowledgement.
We approved his request.
Second.
Second, we approve the request to go to full time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, John.
Any further discussion? All favor, raise your right hand. Hold your seat. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
Take care.
She's seen it, she's signed there.
Yeah.
And then I signed there.
Yeah.
And there's two spots.
We'll bring this down to the minutes.
Shipman as our new county attorney, starting actually in June. And he'll be working with, with Dan for about six months before he really takes over because we want to have a good transition, and Dan suggested we do that. And we, we had two great proposals, and it, it was very hard. It took us three months to decide what we were going to do on, on this one because both applicants had, had great qualifications and it was difficult. Hourly rate with Mr. Shipman will be $165 an hour, which is a lot cheaper than what we're even getting now. And so.
Now, Dan, Bill's leaves his office here, so if you're paying an hour, you're paying for an hour of trouble.
Right, right. And it'll be great having somebody so close and.
Who's your other candidate, George?
It was Greg Hackemeyer. And it was difficult because they're both great, great people, great attorneys.
Dan?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we need the meaningless to be approved yet.
I saw moved to approve as written.
Second. Second, any further discussion? Raise your, all favor, raise your right hand. Does anybody from the public have anything they want to say?
Really quick, I do want to report that State Board of Accounts is done with their 2014 and 2015 audit. And we will have our exit conference next Thursday. And everything went great, and they were actually supposed to be here until about April or May, and they left. Actually, it was last Wednesday they were going, so.
Sweet. It's a relief, huh?
You personally, staying on top of things.
Yes, thank you.
So I want to thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The, our entire office, you know, they really helped get them everything they needed so they can get in and out of here, so.
Good deal.
All right, thanks.
One last thing, if you haven't anything to do with what we're doing exactly, but this invitation that she gave you, that there, I've talked with Pat O'Connor, Superintendent of Schools, and they're trying to get as many people as possible. Said they'd love that 300. I don't know if they'll get to 300. At that time, there will be probably more of an explanation, and I'll try and make that work. So she'd like to look at that either if you may. Thank you. Back to work.